To order. There are five members present. Absent tonight are Mr. Lemay, Mr. Borenstein, Dr. Vannider, and Mr. Meyer. Dr. McCannett, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and of the greatest in justice.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate away from the building. At this time, we request that cell phones and other electronic devices be silenced. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
That was amended.
Mrs. Beeger, second. Dr. McClary? Sorry, there was no amendment to that. Let me change that. The motion is as presented. Mrs. Beeger first, Dr. McClary second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, three personnel, and four special needs and student activities as presented? Mrs. Vansys, second. Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Four? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. The board would like to thank the following retirees for her service to the district: Nancy Grisanti, East High School, part-time teacher aide for 20 years and six months May please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on April 9th, 2019? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Second. And Dr. McClary, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none? All in favor? Done on the end? Are we good? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Nancy. No opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Quiet President's Report. Under Events, the Williamsville PTSA 62nd Annual Service to Youth Awards was held on Monday, May 6th, 2019. That was yesterday. Mr. Borenstein and Mrs. Vansys attended the event. Mrs. Vansys will report on this special event.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mrs. Vansys. Mrs. Leatherboro, could you back up to the, just needs approval of the minutes of the special BOSI's administrative?
I see.
I need an approval of that, please.
Thank you so much. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of a special meeting, BOSI's administrative budget, and board member election on April 16th, 2019? Vansys, thank you. Second. Mr. Maka, thank you. All in favor? Oh, I meant to say Mr. Meyer. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Back to events. Mrs. Vansys, will you give us a report for service to youth?
Sure. So, on Monday night, Williams, at Williamsville East, the PTSA Council ended up sponsoring our Service to Youth Awards. This was the 62nd annual award ceremony. It's always a beautifully put reception for three individuals that have shown sustained and extraordinary service to our youth in our school district. So, this year's recipients, for the professional award, it went to Michelle Weber, who is the school librarian at Maple East Elementary. For support staff award, it went to Ellen Shores, who is an educational aide at Casey Middle School. And the volunteer staff award went to Andrea Weibert, who is a Williamsville North PTSA member. So, again, it was a great night. Dr. Martsloff, many of the assistant superintendents and administration was there to also support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vansys. There will be a Buffalo Philharmonic event for music education on Saturday, May 11th, 2019. Attending is listed as Mr. Borenstein. In the event that he's unable to attend, is there anyone that is interested in going? Moving on. Erie County Association of School Boards, there will be a Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner at Salvator's on Thursday, May 16th. I plan to attend this event. The Erie County Association of School Boards is having their annual dinner meeting at Salvator's as well on Thursday, June 6th, at 5:15 PM. Attending right now is Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, Mr. Maka, and Mrs. Vansys. The board will be donating a basket for the annual Erie County Association of School Boards dinner. The Sunshine Fund will be used for the items seated for the basket. Thank you to Mr. Maka for volunteering to create this year's basket. Should a new board candidate become elected, the following are mandatory trainings that need to be fulfilled within the first year of service: a six-hour governance training, a six-hour fiscal oversight responsibility training. Both of those are happening at Erie when BOSI's, and you can get details from Mrs. Carey for that event. Western New York Education Law Conference will be happening on Wednesday, August 7th, from 8:30 to 3 o'clock. Is there anyone interested in attending? This is the Western New York Education Law Conference.
Maybe.
Dr. McClary's a maybe. Ms. Vansys, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to report under Erie County Association of School Boards? Thank you. The New York State School Board Association, otherwise known as NISP, is hosting a school board member appreciation reception. This is open to school board members, the superintendent, and the district leadership team. Attending right now on June 25th, from 6 to 8 PM at Templeton Landing, listed as Mr. Lemay, myself, Mrs. Beeger, Dr. McClary, Mr. Maka, Mrs. Vansys. Is there anyone else interested in attending? Dr. Martsloff, did you say you would be joining us for that evening?
Yes, myself and Mr. Scanzuza was also attending.
Sure. All right, thank you so much. All right. Should a new board candidate become elected, the following are mandatory trainings that are also offered through NISP, the 2019 New York School Board Member Academy, which will be happening on August 23rd and 24th in Niagara Falls. Does anyone else have anything to add under NISP? Okay, Mrs. Carey, would you please announce and introduce the candidates for the school board for this year?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. I'm pleased to announce our four candidates on the ballot for the three states this year for the three-year term that would start July 1st, 2019, and then June 30th, 2022. In the position 1A is Teresa Anne Leatherboro. 2A is Suzanne Vansys. 3A is Mary Beeger. 4A is Swarup Singh. And the annual district vote is Tuesday, May 21st, from 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM at Williamsville North High School in the gymnasium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carey. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the hiring of workers and rates of pay for the annual district vote on May 21st, 2019, as presented? Mrs. Vansys, second. Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Upcoming Board of Education Building visitations. Tomorrow morning, we have a visit at Country Parkway at 8:00 AM. Right now, attending is myself and Mrs. Vansys. Is there a board member who is able to attend, so that we might have three?
Yeah, I'll substitute them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Meyer. Is there anyone else coming that morning?
If you.
Okay, perfect.
I'll sit.
Thank you.
Sit at the evening.
It's at 8:00 AM at Country Parkway?
No.
I'll say I'll be a maybe, but probably yes.
I'd love to see you there tomorrow morning, bright and early.
It's being tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be there.
Great. Monday, May 20th, at 7:30 AM, we have a visit at Dodge Elementary. Attending is listed as Mr. Lemay, myself, Dr. McClary, Mrs. Beeger, and Mrs. Vansys was a maybe. Are you able to attend? Wonderful. Our final visit for the year will be at District Office, and that is Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, at 8:15 AM. Attending is Mr. Lemay, myself, Mr. Borenstein, and Mrs. Vansys. Mrs. Beeger, you can attend as well?
I can go as well, yes.
I'll go as well.
Mrs. Beeger and Mr. Meyer are able to attend as well. Thank you. Moving on to our superintendent's community update. Dr. Martsloff, will you please provide a community update?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. I just wanted to provide a community update on one item. We've had a little bit of confusion around some discussions that have taken place about graduation gown colors, about homecoming, king and queen, amongst a number of other items that we're having discussions with students, faculty, and parents at each of our three high schools, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure people being comfortable. I want to make sure everyone here knows we have made no decisions on any of those items, and I will be sending out clarification to all staff and high school parents tomorrow sometime, to clarify exactly where that conversation stands and what to expect in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Martsloff. Moving on to item eight, finance review of the 2019-2020 budget. Dr. Martsloff, will you please provide a final review of the 2019-2020 proposed budget?
Thank you again, Mrs. Leatherboro. Hopefully, we all have this presentation memorized by now. I think we've all seen it a number of times in a number of venues, but at any rate, I want to share again with the board where we are in terms of our budget for next year. Our budget accomplishes a great deal. It's able to maintain the current level of instructional and extracurricular programming for students, maintaining physical, mental, emotional well-being of students at all levels. It introduces Mandarin Chinese as a new elective for languages other than English at all three high schools. It continues to offer expansive AP course selection, supports university and college partnerships, so that students are able to earn college credit while they're still in high school. In addition, it provides more classroom supply funds that will reduce extra costs for parents, and supports the second year of a three-year plan to strengthen administrative support at the elementary school level. We also want to focus on making all of our staff members the best that they can possibly be by continuing to support a high-level professional development for all teachers and staff members. And in addition, this particular proposed budget is fiscally responsible in that it keeps the tax levy increase below the New York State mandated tax cap. So, what does it look like for program continuation? We have employee salaries going up by about $3.6 million. Social Security, a little over $400,000. Health insurance and BOSI services are each a $400,000 increase, and contract services and supplies is going up by $450,000, for a grand total of $5,273,562. At the same time, we're looking to do a couple of items to enhance our budget, and I mentioned those already, one being languages other than English at the high school level, and enhancing administrative support at the elementary schools at two more schools for next year as part of our three-year plan that started during last year's budget process. So, the program continuation of almost $5.3 million plus $254,000 in added program support adds up to $5,527,562 in terms of a budget-to-budget increase. So, we need to look at expense reductions we can make. So, our proposed expense reductions is $75,000 in utilities. Our teacher retirement system is decreasing by $425,000. We had a number of teacher retirements this year, which will save us about a half-million dollars in salary. Our facility repair reserve of $8,413. Computer supplies, $50,000. And our legal budget is projected to decrease by $100,000. So, all these expense reductions add up to a little over $1.1 million. So, our base budget currently, $190,815,689, plus the $5,527,562 in expense increases. Subtracting out the expense reductions of $1,158,413, leaves us with a net expense increase of $4,369,149, which is a 2.29% budget-to-budget proposed spending increase. Our expense budget, as it always is, is focused on instruction. That's the area we want to make sure we're spending our money on, instruction for our students, and making sure their program is as robust as it can be, so our students can be successful in school and beyond. Our New York State tax cap, as I mentioned, is 3.18%. This projected levy increase is at 3.15%, which is $36,000 under the tax cap. So, this is a quick review of our revenue budget, which the tax levy would increase, as would state aid. If you notice, state aid is only going up $363,491. That's about a .4% year-to-year state aid increase. That's the lowest aid increase we've had in at least eight years. Other revenue increasing by about $130,000, which you'll notice results in the revenue equaling the expense. So, most of our revenue comes from the property tax levy of our local taxpayers, and then about 22% is from state aid, with smaller percentages in different areas that support our budget for our school district. So, that proposed budget, again, is a little over $195 million, which is a budget-to-budget increase of 2.29%. We're proposing a 3.15% increase in the tax levy. We don't know what the tax rate increase is going to be. It's going to depend on equalization and assessments and where things stand. We don't establish that until August, so that's just an estimated number. We also are proposing to our voters the creation of a capital reserve fund, which would allow us to save up to $23 million over the next 15 years, and it would allow us to transfer $3,343,952, rather, from existing transportation capital reserve funds. Those are funds we used to use to purchase buses every few years. And this is a proactive measure to address future facility needs and school improvements, and it also, of course, supports the long-range plan, and there is no cost to taxpayers. Now, keep in mind, members of the Board of Education, that in order to spend any dollars from the capital reserve fund, we would have to go back to the voters and ask for permission to do that. Estimated impact on homeowners for an assessed property of $150,000, the basic star subsidy is $46.46, and enhanced subsidy $31.01. What does it look like over the last five years? As you can see, we've been fairly consistent. We did have one year where the tax rate decreased quite a bit, and that was due to the reassessments across the town. And we generally have a tax levy increase that we propose to our voters that is below the tax cap every year since 2011, when it went into law. And our budget-to-budget increase has been generally right around 2%. What does it look like for rates across area school districts? As you notice in this particular graph, we're about right in the middle in terms of what we would see in terms of the tax rate per thousand compared to other school districts. Now, what happens if people come to the polls and they vote the budget down? That would result in us coming back together for a meeting and discussing what we'd like to do. You essentially have a couple different choices. You can present the same budget back to voters at a later date. You could accept a 0% levy increase, which would require $3,875,057 in budget reductions that would have to be done at that time. Or, you can make other adjustments to the budget with some expense reductions and put a different budget back out to voters for a second vote. If the second vote were to also be declined by the community, then you'd be looking at a contingent budget amount of $191,309,781, which would essentially be a 0% tax levy increase for the Williamsville Central School District. So, your vote counts. We hope people will come out and participate in democracy at the annual district vote and school board election. As I, we already mentioned, the items on the ballot, as well as the school board election, to vote for three school board members to represent the Williamsville Central School District community. And this vote will, of course, take place Tuesday, May 21st, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Williamsville North High School Gymnasium. So, this concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might
Seeing none, thank you. We will now hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. We invite you to speak on the budget. Please go to the podium, state your name and address, and provide your signature. Thank you. Are there any students that wish to speak on the budget or ask a question related to the budget?
A hand in the back, Mrs. Leatherboro.
We do have a hand. I'm sorry, I can't see behind the wall. Can you come forward?
Uh, yes. I shall.
Hi, just state your name. You don't have to say your address.
Amanda Cohen.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I found this meeting to be very, it's a lot really going on. It's just my first time really going to one of these meetings. It's just a lot to keep up. But one thing that really stood out to me was the fact that despite us being a very well-funded school district, we wanted to, like, put more in. And I feel, I worry that sometimes we might tend to overspend, because I pity greatly for the schools in the inner-city areas in Buffalo. I have been told that in Buffalo Central Schools that resources are very, very scarce. What will you do to really, like, give back to, like, other school districts? Could you, like, perhaps, like, work hard to, like, you know, help fund, like, schools and other districts? I don't even know what I'm talking about. I'm so sorry. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I do. Dr. Martsloff, would you like to try to?
Sure. What you're describing is not legal in New York State. We cannot assist other school districts with their financial needs, such as the Buffalo City School District. The state of, the state gives aid to all school districts across the state. And the Buffalo Public Schools has about three times as many students as Williamsville, but they also receive almost 20 times more New York State aid in terms of the amount of dollars they get to run their school district. So, you could make a fair and rational argument that they already are getting much more in terms of dollars from New York State than Williamsville or other area districts.
But I think part of what, of, like, why the population of Buffalo is decreasing is the, just the education in, like, those city areas. And I feel like by really, by really trying to, like, make a difference and find some sort of legal way to really bring awareness to this issue, I think it could really help our city. And, like, maybe just get some more people to, like, come in and just, like, get education, not only in the metropolitan areas, but also in urban areas.
Thank you so much for your comments and your advocacy. And one of the best ways to become an advocate in the city of Buffalo is to become a Buffalo Public School teacher. So, maybe that will be a route for you. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thanks so much.
Yep. Mr. Maka, thank you.
I also wanted to address the question.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I appreciate your willingness to come up and ask the questions, and I think it's an important issue. I work in a city-school district, and I think, you know, as Dr. Martsloff stated, the funding from New York State is substantial compared to the funding that we receive. However, the needs are also substantial of the students, since I'm familiar with that population of students. I do want to say, though, in addition to funding issues, I do believe that Williamsville has worked together with some school districts, not just, not just the city of Buffalo, on some projects. Would you be able to speak to some of that, Dr. Martsloff? I remember.
I know that Maple West does a great clothing drive, or, no, I'm sorry, Maple East does the clothing drive that benefits students at one of the Buffalo Public Schools. So, that there's acts of kindness happening within all of our schools, but I don't believe that that can legally be connected to our school budget.
The one, you'll have to refresh my memory, the one initiative that came out of Rochester, where I think it's sourced, was it Sources of Strength?
Yeah, it was Change.
Challenge to Change, that's it. I believe there were students from Buffalo participating in that with Williamsville, no? Oh, students from Sweet Home and Amherst and Kenmore. Okay. All right, maybe, maybe we can invite students from Buffalo to participate in that as well, to expand our horizon in that respect. But I think it's a good issue. I'm glad you came up and talked about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on our budget? Our annual budget vote is Tuesday, May 21st. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 28th, at 7:00 PM here in District Office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the special board meeting? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Vansys, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. We will be having a brief recess, and then shortly, we will begin our Meet the Candidates Night. That will be happening to the, by the League of Women Voters and facilitated by the PTSA Council. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Candidates Night. My name is Ron Schubert, and I am this year's co-president of Williamsville PTSA Council. Our organization consists of members representing the 13 individual school, PTA, and PTSA units in the Williamsville School District, and SEPSA, the District-Wide Special Education Parent Teacher Organization. We work together to provide unifying strength and a channel of communication between parents, teachers, students, school district administrators, the school board, and community. Part of our function in this role is to host Candidates Night, which provides an opportunity for the community to listen to and ask questions of candidates for the Williamsville School Board. Tonight, we have present four candidates running for three seats on the school board. The program will be moderated by Kathleen McCormick, and the timekeeper will be Pat Wiley, members of the League of Women's Voters. I now turn the program over to Kathleen McCormick, our moderator, who will explain the way the program will be run tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan group, so we don't endorse any candidates at all. We're here to make sure that the electorate is informed and then vote, and try to help them vote in an informed way. We have collected questions, and we have time, we'll have time for 11 questions, so we'll just take them as they come in. They're being delivered. There's someone around collecting them, so feel free to put a question in. The candidates will have three minutes for an opening statement, and we're going to just start on the right with Mr. Singh. And then after their opening statements, we'll start, all candidates will answer each question, two minutes per question. Candidates will give you a 30-second warning. Two minutes per question. Candidates will give you a thirty-second warning, and then we're gonna stop you at two minutes. All right. Um, and then we'll finish up with three minutes uh for closing remarks. So... Okay, Mr. Singh, if you wanna begin with an opening statement.
All set. Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, and uh thank you all for coming. Thanks for the PTSA for organizing this, and thank you League of Women Voters for taking, doing this every year. And thanks for all of you coming because it's raining outside, and I didn't really expect anyone to come. Uh, my name is Swarup Singh, and I'm a resident of Williamsville for the past eight years. And I work at Roswell Park as a research scientist in immunotherapy. I have a PhD from the University of North Carolina and MBA from UB. And I have two kids in the Williamsville School District, and one is in eighth grade, Anika, and one is in second grade, Ria, who's sitting right over there. And uh, like all of you, most of my evenings, I, I'm like a Uber driver for the kids, driving back and forth. And uh, my uh agenda, if I am elected to the board, is provide additional resources for mental health programs, uh, work on a long-term strategic plan, and uh create an environmental awareness and sustainability educational part in the curriculum. And hopefully, I'll bring a diverse perspective to the board. And uh, we all heard about the recent shootings happened two days back, and I don't think nothing is gonna, it's gonna stop. In nineteen weeks, there are fifteen shootings this year. And uh, most of the efforts that the gun, it, to curtail this kind of crisis has been more security, beef, beef up uh sec, I mean, security in schools. But the bigger picture is how do we stop that from happening? And that happens if you are willing to spend more resources on mental health programs. It's easy, I mean, most of the effort has been on crisis management as opposed to early identification, prevention, and routine care of troubled children. Our mental health staff in our schools, especially middle and high schools, are stretched thin, and they require additional resources. I will advocate for increased funding for staff development on this continuum of care, which means I incorporate early signs of uh mental health conditions, and I connect students to appropriate services. Funding would also allow school-based mental health professionals to coordinate services and support between schools and community mental health system. I believe efforts to improve school climate, safety, and learning are not separate. They're all connected, and they must be designed, funded, and implemented as a part of a comprehensive, long-term plan. We need to articulate priorities for a long-term plan, which could be like, which could involve schools, environment, learning, staff development, and most importantly, where do we see the school in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Ms. Beiger.
Hello. Um, again, thank you to everyone for coming tonight for PTSA Council for hosting, and the League of Women Voters for being here and holding this event. Uh, my name is Mary Beiger. I have served as the parliamentarian on the Williamsville School Board for the past three years. I have a vested interest in the Williamsville School District. Um, the schools directly impact my family, since my children attend schools in Williamsville. I have three boys. Uh, fourteen-year-old is a freshman at North. Uh, I have a nine-year-old who is soon to graduate from Haim Elementary and heading to Haim Middle. And my littlest guy uh will be attending kindergarten in the fall at Haim Elementary. Uh, of course, I want the best opportunities for my children and their peers to learn and grow. And in addition to my interest in their education that they receive here in Williamsville, my own education is rooted here as well. I attended Dodge and Casey. Uh, my husband attended Country Parkway and Mill, and uh we both graduated from Williamsville East. Uh, professionally, I've worked as an educator in the Kenton School District for almost twenty years. I was a classroom teacher. Uh, then after thirteen years in the classroom, I worked as a reading and math AIS teacher. And the last few years, I've been working as an instructional support specialist in our district. So, my educational background, teaching experiences, really do provide a deep understanding of curriculum and current issues that are facing public education. I hold a bachelor's degree in elementary education from SUNY Cortland, and I have a master's degree in music education from UB. As a current member of the board, these past three years, uh, I really appreciate all people, and I've learned so much about how many different people in their different roles contribute to the success of our district. Uh, if I am reelected, I'll continue to strive for continuous improvement in our district, respectfully listening to and considering all community members, working as a team to make choices that are in the best interest of our students. Um, I will continue to promote positive and productive dialogue between community stakeholders and ensure we're doing our best work in support of student wellness, student safety, and achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Vansys. Um, I too would like to thank everyone for their time and being here tonight. Um, just a little background on who I am and why I'm a, why I am seeking reelection. First, I am a parent with children attending Williamsville Schools. I currently have a daughter who's a junior who attends North, and a son who is in seventh grade at Casey Middle. So, I am very vested in our schools and want the best educational opportunities, not only for my children, but for all the children. I have been and will continue to be actively involved in the schools and district, as well as within the community. Secondly, I am an educator. I hold various different degrees in education. I have twenty-seven years of experience, both teaching general education students, as well as special education students, at both the elementary, intermediate, and secondary levels. I believe that this is an asset, as I understand issues facing public education, and I feel it is necessary to continue advocating to support our children. As an incumbent, there have been, been many actions we have taken to improve student achievement and wellness, and to assist, assist our district in evolving with the changing times in order to, one, be the best that we can be as a district, and, two, meet the needs of all of our students. Some examples that we have worked very tirelessly at over the past three years: elimination of class rank, revising various board policies, having open and honest two-way communication with both the WTA and WAA, utilizing surveys to gain parent, teacher, and student voice to better understand priorities and needs, um, the addition of Mandarin at our three high schools as an elective. Also, a second public expression at our board meetings. Seeking legal counsel for our board to ensure we are making decisions that are legally sound and appropriate. And there are several other items that we have worked together as a board to do. So, in reflecting about the question that right now we are often asked, are you really going to run again? And then it's followed up with, why? My response is pretty simple. Yes, I am going to run again. And I am running because I care. I care about our teachers and our staff, our leadership team, our parents, our community, and most importantly, our students. I care about Williamsville.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Ann Leatherbarrow. I serve as vice president to the Board of Education here in Williamsville Central School District. I am grateful to live in this beautiful, diverse community and call it home. I'm here tonight to listen and answer any questions that you might have about education issues that impact student achievement and wellness. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and all the members of our PTSA for organize, organizing this event and for joining us in service to our children and families. On a personal, personal note, I am a parent and an educator. I have three children here in the district. My daughter Serena is, a grad, will be graduating this June from Williamsville North. My son Samuel is a sophomore at North. And I have a daughter Maggie Elizabeth, who is in sixth grade at Haim Middle. I hold a bachelor's degree from SUNY Fredonia and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Mediah College. And I'm a veteran teacher from the Buffalo Public Schools with eighteen years of service. I believe that we learn more from listening than from speaking. I look forward to listening to your questions tonight and will do my best to provide answers that align with our district's first belief statement, that our highest priority is our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start into the questions now. So just a reminder, you have two minutes, and we'll give you a thirty-second warning. So, and I could say something. And I will say something if you're running over, but, you know, glance over maybe once in a while. We try to give you a clue. Okay. So, the first question is, and we'll start uh with Mr. Singh. What would be your top three budget priorities?
My top three budget priorities, my first, I would think of increasing uh funding allocation for staff development, for mental health programs. And uh, some schools might also need additional support, like in terms of counselors or psy, uh psychologists. Depending on the school population and the, the amount of resources currently has, that would be the first thing I would consider doing. And uh, second, I would add uh in the curriculum, uh, educational support for environmental education, like environmental sustenance. Uh, so that our kids, when they grow up, they become much more productive and citi, much better citizens than we are. They take care of the world. And uh, lastly, I would probably add some more funding for diverse education in the school.
Thank you. Ms. Beiger.
So, it's an interesting question, because when you talk about what would my top priorities be for the budget, when I was elected three years ago, I was elected with a lot of great ideas of what I thought was best. And, and one of the things that I have learned over the last three years is that this role is really to represent what the community wants. So, I'll share some of the things that I think are um really should be prioritized in the budget. Ultimately, I think our role as a board is to listen to what the community, um, what people working in schools feel are, are important aspects of the budget, because that can help us to inform our work. Um, I agree wholeheartedly with the idea of supporting mental health. And I think that um to just add positions without a plan behind it is a mistake. While I think it's important to add positions, that, that's very costly. And if we're going to do that, I think that there's other work that can be done um to, a- as far as staff development. If we have additional counselors, additional social workers, how are they being used? How are they being used to um work with classroom teachers who may not have the same kind of training? Um, so I think there's a lot of work that can be done there, not just with hiring positions, but also um to help educate our people who are working with students in our um schools. I think that um we've heard a lot about class size over the last few years, and we've done some work, and it's been seen in the budget where we've added additional teachers. We've done our work primarily, oh no, thirty seconds, all right, um, primarily at elementary, and I think moving up a little bit. Instructional support, I think, is a, a third item, and that can work in a variety of areas. For differentiating instruction, so we can better meet our um learners that are struggling, as well as our learners that um are, are exceeding grade level expectations, but also need challenges. I think that there can be work to be done around there, and as well as um students who are English-language learners. Uh, we've seen such an increase in population um in L students, and we really need to do more for professional development, not just for our ESL teachers, but for our classroom.
Gonna have to stop you. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Ms. Vansys.
So, we all know that this is the million-dollar question. We just don't have a million dollars. Um, it would be wonderful if we did, but just as Mrs. Beiger said, in really listening for the past three years of what seems to be top priorities of students, and then with parents and teachers, we truly understand and realize that mental health is at the top of the list. And so, there's a wide variety. We have different programs that I think it would be great to build on. We, of course, would like to see not just counselors, social workers. There's so many different avenues that you can go down um to help support our students. Even working with agencies and having agencies be able to come into our school to provide those supports and create that relationship and that linkage so that they can transition more appropriately to college and career. The second thing would be, yes, diversity. Um, this seems to be a big student need right now, and we hear a lot of student voice in regards to this. Looking at different programs, even our instruction, textbooks. We have to make sure that the textbooks that are being utilized is really appropriate for all of our students, so that they're able to get that knowledge.
Have to stop you there. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead. Ooh, I was gonna say, that was short.
Sign go up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And along with that, PD for our teachers, so that they understand diversity. And lastly, in order to support the diverse instruction, having that additional staff to not only reduce class size, but to also provide more individualized support for our students within the classroom.
Perfect. Sorry.
Can you, can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What would be your top three budget priorities?
Thank you. So when I'm thinking about budget priorities, I wanna look at it from a revenue and state aid angle. Uh, my priority would be to continue to advocate and to join forces with our WTA and our principals and everyone in our community to further advocate for state aid. Our government needs to fully fund public education. It currently is not doing so. We have a lot of money going to charter schools that could be going right to our district. Another issue would be to continue to seek out ways to reduce expenses. In this year's budget, we already are proposing a budget that will reduce expenses by one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and some change, which is excellent. I would like to continue to do that and find out, find ways that we can reduce expenses with, without impacting student achievement. And finally, if I had that magic wand and I had that money to spend, I would want that money to go first on safety initiatives, then mental health support, and finally, class size. Reducing class size so that our students get more individual care. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, second question, and we'll begin with Ms. Beiger on this one. Since the twenty nineteen twenty, twenty nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty budget uh didn't allow for additional mental health staff, what can we, as a district, do to ensure that our students' mental health needs are addressed?
That's an excellent question. Uh, and it's something we've talked about at length as a board, because it's something we hoped to add to the budget. I think that it's really important to be strategic about what it means when we say we're supporting mental health. And um to my point that I had started to say in the last question, it is really great to have additional staffing, but also, we really need to pay attention to how our staffing is being used. Um, because you can have one um social worker or four social workers, but how are they working with students? How are they working with staff? And so, this year, we don't have money in the budget for additional bodies, but we do have um the capacity to do some planning and some work around professional development for our adults that are currently in the building. And I think that um a strategic planning process that we've started in our district will hopefully bring together stakeholders to have some ideas around what we can do, how we can better support um the needs of our students. Students are coming to our classrooms, experiencing trauma that we don't know about. And as classroom teachers, um, teachers are trained to teach con, academic content. But you can't teach academic content if kids don't feel safe, if they don't feel open and embraced and able to learn. And so, if there's a student that's um suffering or having some kind of anxiety, depression issue, um, and they don't have that person, and there's not a counselor or a social worker available, um, I think we can do more in our district to help support our staff with how to work with children who are struggling or have um other avenues or places that children can go, working with each other too, not necessarily adults. And our district's done a lot of work around that, Sources of Strength, um, trying to support uh students that are struggling. students that are struggling, but I think that we can continue to do more and incorporate ideas that kids and staff members have. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Venceis.
Could you repeat the question?
Since the twenty nineteen, twenty budget didn't allow for additional mental health staff, what can we, as a district, do to ensure that our students' mental health needs are addressed?
So, the state does continue to put out mandates that are unfunded, but currently, a new mandate was that there needs to be some health, mental health instruction and education at the elementary level. So, the district had to be creative with how that was going to be handled and how they were going to provide that. So, they have worked that out with middle school counselors going down to the elementary schools and incorporating that. I think a lot of it is going to be about increasing awareness, both amongst our teachers and our students, things like identifiers and signs of what distress looks like with their peers and their students, and additional ways to seek help, making sure that we have staff and administration that's available and accessible for students, so that they have safe places and they can come to school feeling safe and in a very positive environment. Many initiatives are going on in the district, such as, Mrs. Beeger said, sources of strength at the high school level. Each school has their own acts of kindness throughout the district that promote positivity and how to treat each other, and such things as PBIS at the elementary levels. So, I think we just need to continue to improve and build on that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Leatherboro.
Some of my suggestions are to continue the connections and the relationships that we have with our students. We know that education is about relationships, whether we're talking about the adults who work for the district or the students who we serve. Everything that we do every day is about the relationships that we make with those individuals. Continuing to talk openly about mental health and mental health issues, I'm seeing that more and more, and I'm happy to see that, because we're removing that stigma, where it's okay to talk about it, and it's okay to not be okay, and be able to ask for help. Checking in with children and saying, hey, how are you today? How are you feeling? What's going on? Just getting to know children on a personal relationship. Trauma-informed care, that my colleagues have mentioned, is a way that we can use professional development to give our staff more skills and more training, because we do see many of our students coming in with higher and higher incidences of trauma. So, those are some ideas I have to continue to support mental health in our district.
Thank you. Mr. Singh.
Like I mentioned in the opening statement, one of the things that we can do without spending money, too much money, is train our existing staff. When I mean staff, it means everybody from teachers to administrative staff, so they can better identify kids who need help. Identification is the first step to prevention of any further escalating mental health problems. So, once the identification, once they're able to identify them, then working with the class counselors or school psychologists, they can develop a plan for that student, how they can treat them, and if there are no resources to treat, then link the services to the community services, so the student is taken care of. It doesn't have to have additional resources, but additional training and additional support from teachers, from the community goes a long way. And like my colleague said, developing a rapport with the student is very important. Once you develop a relationship, it's easy for them to confide in you, tell you things that you normally wouldn't hear. And the other thing is, by creating an environment of mutual inclusiveness, mutual inclusiveness, I'm sorry, like more, you encourage diversity, so everybody is more comfortable in their own skin, and they're able to come and, you know, be themselves, they don't feel left out, and there's a culture of belonging in the school.
Thank you. Okay, this one, Ms. Venceis, you'll begin with. Other than school safety, what is the top concern you would like to see addressed, and how would you address it?
So, again, we would have to go back to supporting some mental health issues that we've already have discussed, but for the past year, we have discussed mental health. We know that it is a concern, and we know that it is a need right now. So, with our budgetary constraints, it's quite difficult, so we are trying to utilize, and the district is coming up with ways, how we can support our students with their mental health needs in today's world without that funding. And with the school safety piece, I know that's an other than, we've also touched on that, and there have been many improvements that the district has. So, the bottom line at this point is, we have what I believe are some of the top priorities, and the district as a whole, we're trying to improve and build on that to make it better.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Leatherboro.
Thank you. I believe the biggest challenge facing our district right now is funding a budget that is in the best interest of our children. As a board member, I understand the challenge of providing our community members with a budget that promotes continuous school improvement, while also remaining fiscally responsible. Inadequate state aid, unfunded mandates, tax surcharges, escalating costs to continue the current level of programming, these are real issues that are impacting our budget each year, and it causes us, as board members, to have to make very difficult decisions. This year, we have a proposed budget of one hundred ninety-five million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, and that represents a two-point-two-nine percent spending increase. It's driven mainly by contractual applications and unfunded expenses. So, I'd like us to continue to advocate and come together, because all people of this community can be advocates for us to have a fully funded budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Singh.
Could you repeat the question again, please?
Other than school safety, what is the top concern you would like to see addressed, and how would you address it?
Like I mentioned earlier, my most pressing concern is mental health, and, but I don't think mental health is totally disconnected from school security, school safety, because if you want to find a solution for school safety, you need to find a meaningful solution which involves mental health too. So, mental health is, in my opinion, the most pressing preventative need, and it helps prevention of incidents in school, could be bullying, could be violence, or could be shooting, could be anything. So, my, I guess, my one main issue is mental health, and that's what I would advocate for.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beeger.
I think our greatest challenge is funding a budget that really supports our kids in the best way possible, and it's kind of the umbrella for all of these different components that people come and share with us, whether it be social emotional health, whether it be student safety, student achievement. So many issues can be fixed with funding, however, I think that with that funding piece, with that challenge, we can't just say, well, I wish we had more money, because it's a challenge, it's always gonna be a challenge, and money doesn't grow on trees. And so, I think we address that challenge by being strategic about what absolutely needs money as far as having professionals, having teacher aides, having people to work with kids, having our structures, but also, what are we doing? How are we strategically using our people in our building to best address our student needs? And so, I think we address this challenge of not getting the kind of funding we're hoping from the state by really working with all of our people, with planning, with finding solutions and working together, because sometimes it seems like the quick fix would be to add positions, but I think really, we need to start to be more strategic about how we can use our people to address that. So, the greatest challenge, I think it could always, we would always say, meeting a budget, adding all the pieces that we want. What we need to start doing is really, and our district does do this, is look at what we have and do the best we can with what we have, all of our resources in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leatherboro, we'll begin with you. In your opinion, what are the most important qualities for a person to have to be an effective board member?
My personal feeling is that being a parent and an educator makes me highly qualified, because I understand the issues facing public education, I understand the work, because I've done that work for many years. I also feel that it's important to honor commitments, so I do that by showing up when I say I'm going to show up, coming prepared, ready to ask questions. Being a good team player, I believe, is extremely important when you're part of a board, but above all, I would say that the most important qualification would be that you're here for the right reason, and that that reason is always what is us first, our students. And so, you can't come to this table with any self-serving motive. You have to come to this table and serve us, to the students. We are here for all students. I am so happy that we live in this beautifully diverse community, and casting votes and actions based solely on how it impacts student achievement and promotes the mission of the district, to me, is the most important qualification for a board member.
Thank you. Mr. Singh.
As a, why do I want to be a board member? Is that a question?
And what are the most important qualities for a board member to be effective? To be an effective board member, what are the most important qualities?
The one thing that motivates me to even try to be on this table here is, I have a passion for education. I want my kids, I want the district's kids, I want all our kids to have the best opportunities they can, and I'll work very hard. I know it's, all of us volunteer time here, and we all of us have other full-time jobs, but this is something we do it because we're passionate about it. We want to have, we want to make sure our kids have a very safe environment, the best mental health options, and the best, best diversity education, best environmental education. We want our kids to have the best of everything, that's why we are all here. And as regarding to my personal qualifications, I'm also serving as a volunteer on the board of the Amherst Youth, and I see what's going on there, I do my best to help. And I've been on the board of two Indian organizations, which serve our Indian community and enhance our cultural traditions. And I'm also on the SDM committee for my daughter's school, Country Parkway, because I want to contribute. I want to make sure I can do my, do my part, whatever skills I have, whatever education I have, I want to put to good use. I want to do my best for the kids, that's it.
One more, you have thirty seconds more.
That's fine, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beeger.
Can you repeat the question?
In your opinion, what are the most important qualities for a person to have to be an effective board member?
Thank you. I think, for me, the most important quality is the ability to listen. When you sit up here at the board table, if you're sitting here thinking you know the right way, or you know how it should be, that's not what this position is. This position is in service to the community. And so, when people either write us letters, or come speak, or there's a presentation, I think it's really important to be open-minded and to listen to what is happening in the district, what, some ideas people have, concerns that people have. And I also think it's really important to have a sense of selflessness, because if you're up here thinking, well, this is the way this issue should be, you're closing your mind off to what other people may consider and actually may have some really good points. So, the ability to have a growth mindset as a board member is really essential, because I'm not up here to project my point of view, I can share that, but also, my vote is tailored by what I learned. And so, not only listening, but then asking questions, obtaining information, we can't just sit up here and, if we have questions, not follow through, and that can be applied to all kinds of things, not just budgetary, but programs that are happening in the school, or, you know, there's so many different things and avenues and pieces of this large school district, so it's really important to be informed, to ask questions, to listen when people share, and also, to show up, to be visible. And sometimes, you have to honor your commitment, so, you know, tonight, my one son's playing baseball, and my other son's umping him, although I don't know if that really happened with this weather. But I made the commitment to be here, I choose to be here, and so, that's an important component of too, because we work as a team, and it's important for team members to be present. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Venceis.
I think an effective, to be an effective board member, it entails a lot, but it's something that that board member signed up to do and to participate in, and some of those things at the top of my list would be not self-serving, that that board member is student-centered, and the decisions are always student-driven. To be accessible and receptive to community stakeholders, to be the liaison, to have that appropriate and effective communication, definitely to work as a team, to be a good team player, and with that, you need to be mindful and respectful of all your other board members. We often say it's okay to agree to disagree, that's what makes a board healthy. Another very important one would be holding people accountable, to ask questions, to seek clarification, to fact-find before any decisions are made. Those are just some of, but what I feel are the most effective characteristics of what a board member should be.
Thank you. Mr. Singh, this one will go to you first. What is the most important issue facing the school board in 2019?
I'm at a disadvantage here. I think there has been a small budget cut from the New York State for the school funding. I think the most important thing for the 2019 budget is how to allocate the resources. There is always a pressing need for adding more programs, more training, but with the limited resources that are available to the board, to the school district, I think the budget was estimated to be like one ninety, some million dollars, but the point being that there is, there's always a decision to be made by the board, how to allocate the resources, what they have, and how to best serve the students, how to add more programs, or how to find efficiencies to save money. So, I guess the biggest challenge for 2019 budget is allocation of resources.
Okay, Ms. Beeger.
Yeah, the challenge, really, allocating resources is where it always starts, because as a board, we have to determine what we vote to approve and what we vote against, and that's something that's ongoing. That's been a challenge all the way through, something that is maybe more relevant at this time, might be more around the path that our district is taking around strategic planning. We're looking really at not just making decisions, because this happens, now we're gonna react this way, and this happens, so we're gonna react this way. I wouldn't necessarily call this a challenge, I think it's just the path that our board has taken. Rather than being kind of disjointed in our actions, I think we've taken this path, really working together more as a team and checking in with all stakeholders, whether it be community and checking in with all stakeholders, whether it be community members, employees of the district, students, our educators, administrators, and starting to move forward in this positive direction in a way that makes sense. So when we get to this piece of figuring out where to allocate funds, that it's not just kind of knee-jerk reactive decisions, but that there's a plan, that we're becoming more proactive.
Thank you.
Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. What is the most important issue facing the school board in 2019?
So we've heard about a lot of different issues and the struggles. But the strategic planning, I like to kind of put a twist on it. We have challenges, but what are we doing to make things better, better for our district? And one of the most important things is the strategic planning that we're doing so that we can look at the district and see how better to use our resources, how better to make sure that we can touch on school safety and align our instruction based on New York State Next Gen Learning Standards and the assessments, and making sure that we're doing the right things. Even included in that, I would have to bring in diversity. There is a lot of students that are talking about diversity. We have an issue going on right now at the three high schools. And it's about being mindful and making sure that we're including all students, being culturally responsive. And there's a lot we can do there without having that funding. Basically incorporating what we're doing with the way teachers present material, with our instruction, and even with students. It's about accepting and tolerating the awareness and appreciation, being equitable and having mutual respect. So with the strategic planning, and I think continued PD and our plan to make things better within our district, we can overcome these challenges without relying so much on that funding.
Thank you. And Ms. Leatherboro.
In addition to funding all of our initiatives with the resources we have available to answer differently, because I find this question to be similar to a previous one, I'll talk about school safety. We just saw, again, another shooting. And I've lost count. And I remember being a student-teacher at Hamburg Middle School when Columbine happened. And it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. And just trying to figure this out, like what in the world is happening to our society? And what can we do here as educators to help keep our kids safe? And that's something that weighs heavily on my mind. Here in Williamsville, there's been a number of initiatives that the board has approved. We have conducted a security audit of all school buildings in partnership with Amherst Police Department. We've approved upgrades to doors, windows, and cameras. We monitor improvements to safety plans and procedures which have to be reevaluated every year. We've requested improved communication through RoboText system, WITS text messages, et cetera. So that way, in case you're not familiar, if there's an incident that happens in the building, a RoboText is now sent to your phone. So you're not caught reading it on social media and wondering what's going on. We've supported the district relationship with our Amherst Police Department. And we're so very grateful for all the fine work that they do. Thank you there in the back, my friends. We've approved a full-time SRO officer. That's a school resource officer that fosters relationships, provides enhanced school security, and educates students about law enforcement and careers. And we've increased police security before and after school. So those are some fantastic initiatives that-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next question. Ms. Beeger, you'll begin with this one. I see you support a school resource officer in the Williamsville schools. Do you foresee any issues or concerns with having a full-time officer on campus? How will you address those concerns?
I don't think it's a concern to have a school resource officer at all. I think it's a great benefit to our district. In fact, I think having just one school resource officer spread across all of our schools isn't enough, to be quite frank. And a school officer isn't just someone patrolling the building. There's so many components of having a school officer in our buildings. If there is an emergency or an incident, it's wonderful to have someone right within our school district that will immediately be able to address. But also, there's an educative component to it as well. And even just seeing our school resource officer as a friendly face, especially for our little ones, we want to make sure that they look at a police officer, that that's somebody they know is there to help and to protect and isn't someone scary. So introducing someone like that as a friendly face to our schools, I think, is absolutely a benefit. And our district would benefit from more. Because I don't know how as one person you can be as present as we would like in all of these schools. I think a school resource officer, I don't see anything negative about it at all. I think it's wonderful that our district has that, and I hope that that continues and expands.
Thank you. Ms. Van Sijce.
I too do not see this as a concern at all. And in fact, if someone does have a concern, I would love to have that conversation of what the concern could be because I think it's of great benefit. This school resource officer is not only visible throughout the day at our various schools. They are relation, they're building relationships. There's a component of relationship building going on. They are providing some educational components there, as well as even using it for career awareness. And like Mrs. Beeger said, we want students to understand that there is safety there, but that they're there to protect. So it's not something scary. It's something that's for safety and that they feel good about. So I commend the district, and I'm very, very happy to see that we have a full-time school resource officer. We would love to even see more and increase that. So I have no concerns.
Ms. Leatherboro.
Absolutely support our men and women in our uniforms. I have several family members who are Westonica cops. Growing up as a kid, I was limited to Sesame Street and Mister Rogers. And Mister Rogers told us that police officers are helpers. And that when you are in times of trouble, you should look for the helpers. So I think it's such a great and needed message, especially with everything that is sometimes shown in the news, that our children are brought up knowing that our police officers are here to help us. They protect us and they keep us safe. So I see no problems with having school resource officers in our buildings. I welcome them, and I appreciate and am thankful for their service.
Thank you. And Mr. Singh.
I think having a school resource officers with the help of the town is a good idea. But as far as I understand, not all schools in the district have an officer. And I think going forward, if there is enough resources, they should plan on doing that, too. I have, I would advocate having officers in the school because the primary, the primary concern is student safety. If students are safe, they'll study. And the addition of resource officer would help in identifying physical threats, which they're trained for. And they're also trained in mitigating them. So, and they also would help in reducing school bullying, which could be a problem and could alienate the students. They could assist teachers in educating the students about safety and effects of modern-day bad habits like e-cigarettes, vaping. They can identify and deter troubled students and who need guidance. They can help in the mental health programs, identifying kids who need help. And of course, the parents have less stress when there's a cop in the school, and teachers, too. And of course, when they have safety drills, it's always good to have a resource officer who can tell what if doing the right way, as soon as the kids are not traumatized. Some kids who have disabilities might be traumatized. But working with a school resource officer and maybe psychologist of the school, they can alleviate most of the concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Van Sijce, this will go to you first. If elected to the board, how would you support programs to improve student success in a 21st century computer internet business job market?
The district would work together. They have a plan. They would go out with their administration, their teachers, their students, and they would present to us what they felt was the most appropriate. One thing that we have asked as a board is, we hear concerns about technology sometimes with the one-to-one Chromebook. We don't see as much pen to paper. And so we ask, we have asked the district, please have some surveys. We would like to get the parent input as well as student input. So that is done, and then a report and a presentation is given to us. We just recently had a presentation, and they were able, the district was able to provide their plan in regards to technology. And then if we're in agreement and we see it's meeting the students with their needs and all the students, then we would approve that. And being confident and knowing that this is the way to go, we do realize that technology is the way that the world is going, especially when it comes to college and careers. So first and foremost, making sure that our students have that, those readiness skills to be able to be productive members of the society are first and foremost. And then making sure the district is following through to provide that to our students.
Thank you. Ms. Leatherboro.
I'm very impressed with the job, excuse me, that our district is doing currently to prepare our students to use technology. All three of my children have ways surpassed me on everything that they can do on a device. And I thought it was pretty good at one point. Courses such as Intro to Business, Basic Computer Apps, Advanced Computer Applications, these are courses my children have taken over the years that I've been absolutely blown away by the syllabus and the work that they're doing in these courses. We have an excellent business program in our high schools that prepares our students if that is their career of choice. We are also beginning to grow our partnerships with our local colleges and universities. We have a partnership now with Damon College so that students will be able to enroll in courses over the summer and take them right on campus, which is a really awesome initiative. When we're speaking of technology, I do have concerns regarding the overuse of technology. I am concerned for our ELL students that they're not getting the language time that is needed in terms of language input and output if we're spending too much time on devices. I'm also not a fan of the one-to-one devices going home with our middle school students. I support them being used during the school day for meaningful activities that foster collaboration. But I definitely have concerns when my 12-year-old has her nose in a Chromebook and she's exposed to that radiation from that device for an entire school day. I don't feel it's necessary to send the devices home, and I would be in favor of that ending. If you've had the opportunity to see the documentary Screenagers, which has been shown several times now in the district, you could learn more about those concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Singh.
The question was how to prepare the kids for the technology?
For actually a 21st century computer internet business job market.
I mean, technology is always changing. We all know that. What's new today, what's new yesterday, they're all old in a matter of days, sometimes in a matter of weeks. And it's difficult to actually keep up with technology most of the time, which is why I'm coming back to my point, is we need a really good strategic long-term plan which we can update depending on how technology changes. So where we want to see ourselves in the future. The kids, I mean, we want the kids to have the best technology. We want the kids to have, be able to graduate from school, able to just enter the job market if they have to, or go to college and pursue whatever dreams they have. We want to have the advantages the present technology offers. But like, like my, sorry, like my colleague said, constantly exposing them to technology also has drawbacks. They, what I have noticed is has more, has more and more kids exposed to technology that begin to lack social skills. They would rather spend time on their Chromebook and iPads than talk to their friends. I've seen dinners where people look at their phones and they don't look at each other. I mean, technology is great. I would love my kids to have the best technology in the world, and I would make sure the school has the best resources, best educational programs for technology. But I would love to leave, love for them to leave the technology resources, I mean, devices at school, not bring them home, like she said. And there are so many online resources, too, like Google University, Coursera, which the school can incorporate part of those courses which are not expensive. And they can keep the students, give the students the latest, I mean, the computer or the programming has, is in the market.
Thank you. And Ms. Beeger.
That's a great point about the impact that technology can have on social skills with our students. I think that's important to pay attention to. I think with technology, that balance is key. We want to make sure that we're holding up to the responsibility of preparing our students so that when they go out in the world and pursue their dreams, there's going to be some aspect or component of technology, and we need to make sure that they have the skills and the preparation to use that. I think our district does a very good job of using technology to teach. We have technology integrators that work at the schools so that we're not teaching computer, we're using technology to further enhance coursework. So it's meaningful. And I think that using technology in that lens is really important. Because the other piece that we want to teach our kids is that they still really need to be able to think for themselves. We all have these magic tools now that you can put, you know, you have a question and you don't even have to think about it. You have Siri or Alexa, depending on what camp you're in, and you get the answer. And I think we need to make sure we continue to challenge our students to think for themselves and seek answers and not just use technology as that avenue. Because ultimately, they'll be more successful if they're using their brains and they're talking to their friends. It's a really important piece, too. So I like that our district continues to survey and reconsider our use of technology because at the time, the idea of one-to-one seems so great to offer that opportunity to kids. But we need to make sure that our kids are talking to their siblings and their friends and their families and that they're using it at the appropriate times for the appropriate reasons so that they continue their learning. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Ms. Leatherboro. I'm going to rephrase this one a little bit. And if the person who wrote it wants to correct what I'm going to ask, that would be fine. I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding it. So what is the most important thing for students to gain from their experiences in the Williamsville School District and why?
That's a really meaningful question for me, since I have a daughter graduating this June. She's, it's so interesting, and it goes by so fast. I just felt like she was just starting pre-K, and you blink and it's over with. And I see people in the audience nodding their heads. I see them having so much stress, and I feel for her. And we have a lot of good talks about why are you putting so much pressure on yourself? And we also have talks about how this might seem like a problem right now, or it might seem something that's really important to your teacher, your course, or this certain test. But in the big picture, doesn't really matter. So what I want my daughter and all of our graduates to know is that there's only living in the present. And the most important skill that you need to leave here with is knowing who you are, what your values are, and being, and having those skills to share kindness and love with others. Compassion is a skill that is very difficult to teach, and compassion comes from resiliency, which is a, is a effect of having struggles. Sometimes we don't allow our kids to struggle. We come up with every little thing we can do to make their life easier and cushier. And yet we see more breakdowns in the classrooms, less coping skills, more mental health, health issues. Some of that, I think, is connected to those devices, too. So I would want our students graduating to think about who they are as a person and what they can contribute in this world, not just about their achievements, but about what they can do for others.
Thank you. And Mr. Singh.
Would you mind repeating, please?
What is the most important thing for students to gain from their experiences in the Williamsville School District and why?
First of all, as a parent, I want my kids to excel in school. I want them to be top of the class, take all the AP classes, get a rounded education, learn arts, music, sports, take part in everything. But I guess the bottom line is what matters to them. Did, did they have, did they learn anything? Did they learn how, not just academics, did they learn to be a good person? Are they compassionate? Will they grow up taking, thinking about how they'll be better citizens of the world, how they can help others? I mean, education is great because it'll, it'll give them a head start in life, which is very essential, don't get me wrong there. And it gets them a leg up, they can pursue their dreams, they can go to college. But bottom line is, are they the caring, compassionate people who don't, who are open-minded? And that comes from a rounded education, from studying in a diverse environment, from studying in a nurturing, nurturing environment. And that's what we are actually proud to have at Williamsville. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Beeger.
I think what's most important for students to gain when they leave here is that they've been able to find their path. When we say we want students to be happy and successful, a lot of students may not necessarily know some of their inner strengths until they're exposed to an opportunity they haven't had before. One of the things that's wonderful about Williamsville is that we have so many courses and clubs. As kids get older, they have these opportunities to learn or experience things that they may not have known that much about, whether it be music or art or, or social studies or science or literature or, you know, or, or sports or whatever it is for that child, something that sparks interest that will really set them on their path for what that makes them happy and what they want to do. And along the way, I would hope that our students would gain friendships, support, mentors, teachers, and the idea that along the way, it's not going to be perfect. Kids aren't always going to make the team, they're not always going to pass the test. And when those things happen, learning those life skills and how to cope, how to survive when, when, or when something really traumatic and horrible happens, those are things that your classroom community can help to support and your friends. So I think not just becoming, you know, the most successful career possible, that's part of it, but it's not just career, it's, it's finding happiness, it's finding something that makes you wake up and smile in the morning. And I hope that with what we support and all that we offer to students, both in support socially, emotionally, but academically, that our students find those things. I mean, I did here, that, that's why I'm here. I, I did through music, that was my thing, and that's what I went to school for, and that's what I do on the side with my kids all the time. So maybe I wouldn't have done that if we didn't have so many programs that helped me to find that spark in myself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Van Cis.
The one thing I would really want any student to walk away here from was just having a love for their life and the future ahead of them. Good character is absolutely at the top. Being compassionate and having sincerity. Thinking, of course, about a sound education, but also making sure that they want to and are energetic about giving back to their community, remembering where they came from and their roots and the values. Being able to be a productive member of society and having that passion for life, no matter what path they're on. To own it and to be content so that they can be as happy for themselves and be able to provide for their family one day, to have a job that they're able to maintain, all of those different future skills.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Singh first. What policies would you initiate to improve student achievement?
I think the Williamsville schools, the way they are right now, they're doing a good job of measuring achievement, but I think there's always room for more. There is, I think, a whole, I'm sorry, I probably didn't understand the question very well. When you say achievement, it, does it refer to the way their test scores in New York State refers to, or?
I think you could define achievement that way. That sounds reasonable to me.
I mean, New York does have a requirement that the kids have to take the math and ELA scores. When, if the question is how are they going to improve on those scores, I mean, the easiest answer would be to study for the, study what is required of them, but that doesn't really mean they're getting the right, I mean, the appropriate education. The actual education, the rounded education actually comes from learning the actual, I'm sorry, I'm a little having trouble articulating it. What I meant to say is sometimes just following the guidelines is insufficient. The teachers have done a great job by going ahead, going beyond what is required to give the kids the better education they need in all subjects, not just the subjects that are needed for grading, for, for your state exams or any other exam.
Thank you. Ms. Beeger.
Can you repeat the question again?
What policies would you initiate to improve student achievement?
Okay, thank you. There's many policies that we currently have, and to initiate a new policy, I think, would have to be something that comes from many requests from all stakeholders, whether it be parents, or something that students are asking for, something we're hearing from the community. One policy we currently have that I've been thinking a lot about lately is the policy that we have around homework in our district. And it's written very loosely, and it's actually very good, but when you ask about how it could improve student achievement, I don't, I haven't been involved or heard discussions in a long time about the purpose of homework. And I'm not sitting up here saying we shouldn't give homework, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm curious about rethinking how and why we use homework because when we talk about achievement, it should be something that students can use to practice. My concerns are when a little ones have really long homework assignments that they need help to complete, it becomes more stressful than beneficial. And my other concern is when homework is graded for students that are really trying so hard to do their best possible job in coursework, and they lose points when they haven't quite yet mastered a concept, I think that's what assessments are for, not necessarily what the homework piece is for. This is my opinion. I don't in any way mean to impose on teacher academic freedom around homework, but I think that talking about it a little bit more and possibly getting people together around this topic would be beneficial, just to make sure that we're using that practice in the correct way. So I think not initiating a policy per se, but looking at the policies we have and ensuring that we have best practices so that our kids can achieve, so that would probably be the homework policy for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Van Cis.
I agree. This is actually a little bit of a difficult question because I, as a board member, would not be on the practice of myself going in and initiating any policy. I'm one of nine, so that would, it's a, it's a very difficult question to sit up here and tell you what I would do. What, around this policy, if there was to be a new policy, I believe it wouldn't come solely from me. I believe it would be something that, that was out in the community, that was a concern that was brought forth. So I would be listening to stakeholders, parents, teachers, students. Does something need to be changed? And do we need to adopt a policy to support student achievement that we're currently not doing? We have, over the past three years, revised many policies. Some of them include homeschool children should be allowed and are now allowed to participate in extracurricular activities. We had an open enrollment submission deadline date that we heard was too early, so it's been moved back, allowing more absences for driver education. So we listen as a body, and when we hear the concerns, which will help making these mindful decisions that can impact student achievement, we then will revise or make the changes to adopt and change as necessary.
Thank you. And Ms. Leatherbarrow.
It's a difficult question, as stated earlier. One of the things that did happen this past year, I believe, was the removal of class rank, and that took several months of discussion. I feel that that was a wise decision for our district going forward because now students aren't choosing classes just based on how they're mathematically going to get a certain GPA, but they're able to choose courses now that might interest them and spark that little light in them to go into a particular field that maybe they hadn't thought of in the, in the past. So that is a policy related to student achievement that was a difficult decision to make. And I feel our board really did its due diligence and took its time listening to all stakeholders before we made that decision. I also feel it's important to have conversations about what does it mean to be a high achieving student? Are we talking just about your grade point average? Or are we looking at your full student repertoire, everything you've done here at school? What clubs are you involved in? Or what sports or music programs are you involved in? How you give back to the community? It was interesting, sitting with my daughter, doing a lot of these scholarship applications over the past few weeks, most of them aren't asking about what your average is. Because if we all think about it, does it really matter in the end? What most of these questions were about was how you contribute to society. And I think defining student achievement in terms of how you behave as a human being is an, an important conversation to keep having here in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last question we have, so there is time for a couple more questions. If the audience has anything else, we'll go ahead and ask it, and then if something comes up, please feel free to bring another one up. And this one's gonna go to Ms. Beeger first. What are your visions for this school district five to 10 years from now, and what systemic changes will you work toward to achieve that vision?
My vision for this school district five to 10 years from now is on, is a path that I think we're on, and that's continuous improvement. I don't think we ever say, well, we got it, we're good. I think that we continue to move stronger together, and the way that we do that is by really listening, appreciating, hearing all of our stakeholders working together so that whatever issue it is that comes up, that we have a system in place to address that issue. I think we are getting stronger with communication, and that's an essential piece to our district on the path that we are, whether it be communication between teachers, principals, principals, district administration, or, or communication between schools and parents, or teachers and students. That's an essential key so that everybody's really upholding the, the mission of the district. We want to be a place where, we've really kind of talked about some lovely things tonight in, in circles around supporting student mental health, about helping students find their path and being successful, supporting student achievement. And I think people may have difference of opinions on how to get there, but ultimately, I think everyone in the education community wants those things for students and maybe just has different ideas to get there. So in order to get where we want to be and continuously improve and get better as a district, no matter what the topic is, I think it's really important to have that open communication, the ability to work as a team, to have positive intentions, and most importantly, always focus our direction on students, their well-being, their achievement, and when your lens is on students, you have that focus in the right place to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Van Cis.
I, I would like to think in five years and actually know that our district will only be better to go off the district's mission that we're developing our students with unique potential and character, that they're able to have responsibilities of citizenship and leadership, and that they're able to be challenged in this rapidly changing global community. So being able to support a mindset of just continuous improvement, I know I've said that before, we are fortunate. I would love to see that our students are now able to celebrate diversity, that we continue to have these high expectations of learning, and that we are able to truly take out and recognize each child's unique character and potential for their success, whatever their own success is based on their ability might be, and to celebrate that and have mutual respect for it.
Thank you. Ms. Leatherbarrow.
I also agree that continuous school improvement needs to always occur. That means asking those essential questions of what are we doing? Why are we doing it? I'm excited about the strategic planning that's, that's going to be taking place so that we can take a look at our mission and beliefs, because if you read through some of those beliefs, they're somewhat outdated. They were developed the year I graduated from high school. I know I look young. In terms of making those decisions, if it, if those decisions come from any one of us or anyone at the top, we did it wrong. Because that needs to come from our stakeholders, it needs to come from everybody working together. So having people at the table, our teachers, our parents, and when I say parents, I mean parents from all aspects of our community, so that when we form a plan, it's inclusive of everyone, and meets the needs of everyone and welcomes everyone's differences, because there's always more that unites us than, than divides us anyways. Thank you.
And Mr. Singh.
In five years' time, my older daughter would have finished high school and going to college, and my younger one would be in middle school. So I still want, I would still want the school to be doing more of what it's doing right now, working for the, for our kids. And like what I stated earlier, this is a continuous process. They, they will be gradually improving, improving changes, which happen every year. But in five years' time, if I, if that was a goalpost I had five years, what would I want, and if I had time machine to go see what will happen five years from now, I would, I would, in the best case scenario, I want our schools to have more money so they can pursue more programs. They can pursue all the programs of which they're trying to compromise right now. More money for mental health programs, I'd bring, come back to this all over again. And, and the other thing which I, which I didn't touch on earlier was that diversity education in our school needs more money, too. It's good, but it could be much, much better. I've seen what diversity classes my daughter has gone through in her middle school, and I think that is just scratching the surface, there's so much to do. And for that, they need more planning, and I would, in five years, I would hope that it has come close to that goalpost, that they improved their diversity education and they have managed to get more money from the state, and the mental health programs. And the mental health programs are a part of the regular curriculum. And last but not least, in five years' time, I want our school to have more programs which teach our kids more about environment. Environmental awareness and sustainability, the environment cannot wait that long. The kids have to start learning and they can, they can bring what they learned back home, so we can change. So I want our kids to learn more than what we learned. I want, in five years' time, the kids taking the initiative for a lot of things that we have been lazy to do.
Thank you. This one goes to Ms. Vansis first. Do you believe the district should be investing more in vocational training programs or technology programs, and why?
So that's a vocational and technology, it's not an or?
It's or. They're asking you to prioritize here.
I would not prioritize, I think that's a trick question, but no, I would not prioritize. I believe that vocational, I'm a special educator. I believe vocational is just as important as the college pathway. So, we have a wonderful Bosse's program, we have Harkness. The amount of opportunities and career exploration that are provided for that vocational pathway is outstanding. So I think that's wonderful, I think we continue to support that and support those students that are looking at a credential or going down to the career pathway. Technology is also important. So, to me, it's not prioritizing, it's balancing so that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Irregardless to their ability level and the classroom setting that they're in.
Thank you.
Erie One Bosse's at the Harkness Center offers just tremendous opportunities for our students. So I don't know that we need to invest in it further, but what I think we need to do is make it more acceptable. So often, the question that is asked to my daughter by perfect strangers are, is what college are you going to? These are people that don't even know her. But they just know that she's a senior. And I think we need to have some honest conversations about that not everyone needs to go to college. That going into a career or technical field, first of all, you might end up making a heck of a lot more than a teacher. Speaking as a teacher. So, those are very rewarding and meaningful positions as well that we need to value within our community here in Williamsville. I didn't grow up in Williamsville, I grew up in Wasanacon, I lived in South Buffalo for 10 years. And so, that was much more accepted in that community. I don't know if we see that here. And I think just having more conversation and having that be more acceptable. Let's get all of our middle schoolers to go over into our Harkness so that they can see what's there for them. Maybe they do, if they do, if they already do it, I'm sorry. But if they don't, let's start that. Because they really offer so much. And even after graduation, some students go to college and they decide it's not for them. So there, there are adult learning options that are available right here at Erie One Bosse's as well. And, and that needs to be supported, as it's okay to do that. Whatever you choose is okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Now, I come from India, so in India, parents ask you a question, are you going to be engineer or a doctor? That's the only choice you have. So, I chose engineer, my sister chose to be a doctor, so that's how we had, we went, grew up. So anyway, when I came here, I realized that this, this society is so different from where I grew up. Here, you actually get to make your own choice. If kid, if your son wants to be a teacher, we need more teachers, by the way. He can be a teacher. If he wants to be a plumber, he can be a plumber. The choice is his. And our society needs everyone, it needs people who are trained as plumbers, as computer programmers, as doctors. There is a space for everyone here. So, our, our school system should encourage that. If somebody wants to choose a career path which is not the stereotype college or something else, it's a duty as a school board to encourage what the, first, you gotta tell him what choices he has and where the career path is going to lead him to. But he should make his own choice, and if he still wants to do it, the school should offer opportunities for him to pursue that course.
Thank you. Ms. Beeger.
I wholeheartedly agree with the spirit of what everyone here has said. I think that we shouldn't be in the business of saying this or this. We're fortunate enough to offer these opportunities to students, and it's really the students that should determine what we're offering and, and how much, if there's student interest in, in certain programs, we want to make sure that we support that. So, I don't think it's our place to say we're gonna invest in this one and not this one, we need to see, and we look at that, that kind of information, every year, we've been looking at student requests, you know, what the enrollment is in each course is to see where student interest is. I don't think that it's our place to prioritize importance on a certain career track over another, I think that we should offer these opportunities to students and let them choose their paths. If we don't offer the vocational path or, or any of these paths, then how would they know that that's something they would enjoy to do? So I, I wouldn't say vocational or technological, I would say and. And I think that that's what we do here in Williamsville, and we should continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Last question here, and Ms. Leatherboro, you began. Cyberbully, sorry, excuse me, cyberbullying is a new issue in our community, how can we help fix it?
I remember walking into high middle earlier in the year and this large bulletin board was up with the acronym of Think, which I don't remember everything it said, but it was giving advice on what to do before you post. I think that one thing we have control of is whether or not we give devices to our students and send them home with them. That's something I feel like we have, that we could do here as a district. We know that there's lots of controls on those devices, but that our students are able to get around things, they're able to get on YouTube and, and other apps. So, limiting access to some of that, I think is important. However, we have to balance the fact that whether we're providing it or they're getting it at home, eventually they're just gonna have it, right? So, what I think we can do is monitor or model appropriate behavior. How often are we on our devices in front of our own children? Are we putting it away at the dinner table when we're talking? Or are we putting it away when we're talking to our children or our spouse? So, our kids are not going to do what we tell them to do, they're going to do what they see us doing. Whether it's at school or, or at home. So, modeling appropriate behavior is extremely important. If you go on the Buffalo News and you read any article, you know that the worst part of the comments. And most of the times, those are adults. It happens even here in, in the Amherst Bee. So, that's like the old school way of bullying, right? Now it's taken on, online. So, just being good role models. If you have a question, or you've heard a rumor, go to the source. Ask if it's true. Don't just post something on social media as an adult because more likely your child is going to, to model that behavior as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singh.
Combating cyberbullying, right?
How would you fix it?
I mean, the school has taken a position of zero tolerance, and I'm really, really happy to hear that. And that's how it has to be, like, bullying has no room in school, especially when kids have to have a safe nurturing environment. And regarding the cyberbullying, that's just a new twist to bullying where your bully is sometimes anonymous, you don't know who's bullying you, it could be anyone you know or someone you don't know. In some cases, you can do the best you can in schools, but with cyberbullying, it's, you're also competing with technology. And there are so many, there are few ways you can, which some schools have done to identify cyberbullying, is they have apps called like NetWashers where they track social media to see who's commenting on who. And they search for keywords, especially the words that trigger what bullies kind of use to humiliate or to ostracize someone. And there are other apps which kind of are also being used by some schools here, which search the cloud to see who is communicating, what are they posting online, and they're able to find out who it is, at least they're able to find out who the target is. And so, the person who is being victimized has an option of having a service, I mean, support service, so he doesn't take any, he doesn't take it to heart, I guess. And then there are apps which also monitor posts on Facebook, which is, people post all the time, and sometimes not all times the posts are nice. And the, the whole point is people, the cyberbullies work, cyberbullying works because there is not much retribution. There's not much you can do when some anonymous, anonymous Skype post on, on the internet about you. So, there are technological things that we can do to at least identify one of them, either the bully or the victim, and act accordingly.
Thank you. Ms. Beeger.
Those are both great points, and I, and I agree with both of, as adults, we need to be role models and, and the idea of having zero tolerance and monitoring. So I, I think to add to that, kids are living in a different world now, where even when we went to school, if there was something horrible happening at school, it ended when you went home. And now it doesn't end. And there's all kinds of layers of cyberbullying, there's, you know, direct insults and horrible things, but there's also just things that impact kids, seeing all the pictures of kids certain places and they weren't invited, and, and you know, pieces like that, it's just such a different social atmosphere, and so much of it is online and in apps, and, and it's just different for our kids. So, in addition to modeling good behavior, of course, making sure that we have zero tolerance for any negative insults or, or cyberbullying that's happening, I really think we need to continue to arm our students with how to handle these situations. So when they see something on social media and they think, you know, some, it's not real, it's not always real, some of these things, it's like this social media made up world, and, and for a child, when they're still learning and developing and growing, it's hard for them to understand sometimes what's the end of the world and what's not. And so, I think, a- and I know our, 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 our school district does a lot around this idea of this whole cyber world and how to handle these situations, but we can continue to do more and help our kids develop these skills around how to handle it, what to say, what, you know, what to place importance on and what to know to put that away and live your real life and put your phone away. When they see everybody else on a phone, it's really easy when you're, you know, younger to do that and to put up that, that wall too, or to get engrossed or keep scrolling and, and finding things that really could be detrimental.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Vansis.
I think the biggest key here is educating our students. And when I say educating our students, I'm not just talking about the schools. I'm talking about parents. We are all part of this. And it cannot be just one entity. I feel that this is a huge problem. I think we need to be proactive and not reactive. Students need to be taught in our children about appropriate use, as well as consequences, when you're not appropriate. They need to learn those and have those, that skill set with them before they're given any type of device. There are many presentations that are offered throughout our district, PTSA usually has them, about cyberbullying. Very few parents attend. It's very difficult for a school just to say, we're able just to cut this out, or a parent to say, what are you gonna do about it? It really needs to be everyone, everyone is a piece of this puzzle. I believe that there needs to be more monitoring. And parents need to have open and honest discussions with their children. It's okay to give them consequences. It's okay to say you're not sleeping with your phone in your room. Or, it's my bill that I'm paying your phone, I will be able to get on and check anytime that I feel it's necessary. That's all part of it. But working together, both the school and the parents, to help our children be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Each candidate now has three minutes to give us some closing remarks. Mr. Singh, we'll start with you.
Thank you, I just want to thank everyone for, PTSA for hosting it, and League Women's Voters for moderating it. And I thank a few parents and administrators here too. As a parent, like everyone on the table here, I'm personally invested in ensuring our school's needs are met to create a safe and healthy environment. Like most of you, I had the good fortune of having great teachers for my two girls. And as a community member, I think I, I want to do my part to help the school board maintain this environment for my kids. And I also want to make sure that they have plans to meet today's challenges. As I mentioned many times before, that my focus is always on mental health programs, long-term planning for the school, and environmental awareness education for the kids. I am very passionate about these ideas. And I really want to put them in action. We live in a very diverse community, and more than 12% of our community are Asians like me. And our school is doing a good job of promoting diversity, but they can do more. They need to create an environment of mutual inclusiveness where everyone has a culture of belonging, belonging to the school. And I skipped a spot in the opening statement. Our best and innovative ideas come from our children. We should encourage our children to think of solutions for problems we are creating, like social, environmental, and sustainability issues. This way, we build a new generation of adults who are more prepared to be responsible citizens of the world. As an independent board member and a trained researcher, I'll examine all facts as a board member that an issue presents, how it affects all stakeholders, the teachers, the students, the parents, the community, before taking any position on a subject. I know that with my multiple graduate degrees, I really love staying in school. And this combined with my professional work and the volunteer experience in the town and schools, I'm sure I'd be an asset to the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Beeger.
When faced to, when faced with the decision to run for the board again, I wondered, there's so many hardworking people in so many areas of the district, is it really necessary for me to throw my hat in the ring for another three years? And then I did some reflecting on some of the work that's been done in the district over the past three years. I've spent the past three years listening to all speakers during public expression with an open heart and an open mind, that was truly something that was important to me. When I decided to run for the board, I wanted to make sure that everyone was really before I was a board member, when I came to the podium, I didn't always feel like everyone was really openly hearing me or my concerns and thoughts, and I wanted to make sure that I was able to play that role and make eye contact and, and hear people, and so, I think that's something that I've done over the last three years. But I've learned so much, I've learned about working as a team, I've learned about agreeing to disagree. I've learned that the majority vote might not always be my vote and how I feel. And that's just part of the process, you have to trust a team working together. I've learned that conflict is not something that you should avoid, it's something that you learn from. I've learned that you can learn a great deal from listening to others, doing research on topics, asking questions, making sure that any doubt or any information you seek, that you find that. While I've been one of nine on this board the last three years, I feel that I have played a positive part in our work. I've always tried to ensure that our focus is on the students. And the school board's work is not done, it's truly never done. I know that we are on a path moving forward now though, and I feel that my work with this team is not yet done. I know I can play a strong role in continuing to oversee relationship building, improve communications between all stakeholders, growing morale, focusing on students and positive learning experiences. We can continue to enhance our academic programs by supporting learners at all of our academic levels, and I think that's something that we can continue to grow. There's so many amazing initiatives happening in Williamsville, so many hardworking educators, parents, and students involved in great work that our entire community can be proud of. And while we have so much to be proud of, we can always get better. And I'd like to continue to be part of this work on our path of continuous improvement. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Van Sij.
My closing remarks just entail that currently, I know we have a great school board. As members, we have a clear vision for the district, we communicate our actions to the community, we work as a team, we adopt a fiscally sound district budget, we advocate at the local, state, and national level for public education, and our primary focus is on what is best for all students. So if we elected to the Williamsville School Board, I will continue to not be self-serving and act in the best interest of all of our students, to remain committed and dedicated, to be accessible and receptive to all community stakeholders, to continue to work as a team member, to ask questions and seek information before making decisions, and to advocate and support. When I attended the same forum three years ago, I absolutely was very anxious, unsure, and even frustrated. At this time, I can now tell you that I am confident, proud, and excited of how far we have come over the past three years, and knowing the district's vision of where they want to be. So therefore, my desire is to continue to serve in this role as a Williamsville School Board Member. And I would just like to take the time out to thank Lynn, Lori, Rita, Deborah, Dr. Martzoff, and all the assistant superintendents, as well as my fellow board members for their endless work and commitment to our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Leatherbarrel.
It is a great responsibility to serve on the Williamsville Board of Education. Together with my teammates, Mary Beeger and Suzanne Van Sij, we are hardworking mothers and professional educators dedicated to promoting student achievement and wellness. As strong women, we lift up other strong women. We don't outshine each other, we shine together, and we put that spotlight on our students. This month, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week and Mother's Day. Please make a commitment to thank a teacher, whether in your life or your child's life, and let them know what they, how they've impacted you. If you're able and blessed to do so, please make sure you do something positive for your mom or a mother figure in your life. She's working harder for you than you will ever know. For everyone that is 18 or older and a resident of the district, please get out the vote on Tuesday, May 21st, to vote yes for our budget. The polls are open at North High School from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please bring a valid ID. I seek reelection because I believe parents and educators should make the decisions that impact teaching and learning. I am ready, willing, and able, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the audience for such thoughtful questions, the candidates for answers.
Before we end, I just have a few closing remarks I'd like to make. I want to thank the PTSA Council members, Sarah Ronan Smith and Clara Salak. Would you both stand just to be recognized for bringing this event on tonight? And thank the League of Women Voters, Kathleen McCormick and Pat Wiley for actually running this event. And thank the candidates, Dr. Singh, Mrs. Beeger, Mrs. Van Sij, and Mrs. Leatherbarrel for participating, as well as as well as our district clerk, Lynn Carey, for her valuable assistance. Also, thank you to the community for being here and participating in this important forum. And as you've already been told, I'll say it again, please remember to vote on Tuesday, May 21st, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Williamsville North High School, in the gym, and that's at the corner, as we all know, of Hopkins and Dodge. And that's it for tonight, and thank you all for coming.